Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the March 20, 2018 Business Meeting of the Council of the Borough of Ringwood. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed on Channel 77 throughout the week. Kelly, statement of compliance, please.
Adequate notice of this business meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Law, PL 1975, Chapter 231, setting forth the time, date, place, and purpose of this business meeting by consent agenda resolution 2018-14 adopted January 1, 2018 through a legal notice published in the Suburban Trends issue of January 7, 2018, and through notices emailed to the following named newspapers and posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall on January 3, 2018, the Suburban Trends and the Bergen Record. At this time, please silence all electronic devices during the meeting.
Thank you, Kelly. Roll call, please.
Council members Bolton?
Here.
Davison?
Here.
Ferretti?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Here.
Council members Noonan?
Here.
O'Keefe?
Here.
Mayor Spear?
Here. Also President, Borough Manager, Director of Department of Public Works, Scott Heck, Deputy Borough Manager, Borough Clerk, Kelly Halowitz, and Borough Attorney, Richard J. Plemac. Please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business tonight has shown on your agendas is the Junior Lancer Competition Cheerleaders, National Champions. We're going to have those young ladies in on our April 3 meeting. Didn't want to bring them out with the way that the weather forecasts were shaping up. We have no further proclamations and presentations. We have approval of minutes.
Need a motion to approve the February 20, 2018 Business Meeting and Executive Session Minutes. Councilman Noonan was absent.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council members, hang on. Councilmember Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Upstein.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda, general public comment. This is the general public portion of the meeting. Anybody from the public wish to address the mayor and council, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Try to keep your comments brief.
Rich Abersbach, 120 Upper Lakeview Ave. So I guess my concern is the liability or exposure to taxpayers going forward primarily with the Superfund site. As you got, particularly with the new council members, you guys ran on, I think the slogan was "Clean Up, Not Cover Up," or something along those lines. And we've seen recently in the newspaper and going back in January that we've lost, I think it was close to $15 million in ratables with the reservoir. From what I understand, primarily due to the way the legislation, or the way we applied for the legislation with the Highlands Act going back, I guess, 12 or 14 years. And looking back at that resolution, there really was concern for the drinking water of New Jersey, people in New Jersey, a couple million people, four, three, four million people, corporations that use the water. Yet, there was no funding mechanism in that resolution. Whether or not we could have got that, we could debate that. But so, the people that were involved in that resolution, from what I understand, were involved with your campaign. Maybe they have influence with you today to one degree or another. So I guess really what I'm driving at is, do you, have you, has your opinion or your outlook been altered now that you've been looking at things from the inside rather from the outside? Maybe there's a lot of moving parts in this, in these issues, in these sites over here. And what is your commitment, or what is your position on protecting the taxpayers? I mean, we're fighting not just Ford, we're fighting our own insurance companies. And the way I understand it, they, we, the taxpayers of the community, could be on the hook for multiples of the 15 million that we just lost as a result of not, you know, thinking ahead and having a primary concern is that, you know, are you committed to protecting the liability or the exposure of the taxpayers who really have nothing to do with what happened up here? I don't know how to resolve it, but just going forward, it would be a little comforting to know that we're all on the same page here. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Jamie Landis, 15 Mohican Court. I also am concerned about taxes. I just saw a $37.4 million spending plan from Phil Murphy, which is up 8% from the current budget. 1.6 billion worth of new taxes coming our way. County increasing taxes just under 2%. We lost a tremendous amount of tax revenue from the Water Supply Commission appeal. And we preserve the watershed in perpetuity, but nobody pays us in perpetuity for doing such. Is there something that we can do moving forward, everybody? Where we can try to petition for a water tax? Who can we speak to? Who can we, who can we complain to and say, "Listen, we are tapped out. And we preserve the water for the state, but yet we don't get paid for that." And that's a major problem. And our residents are taking the hit because of that. So that's just kind of what I have to say for tonight. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
My name's Tedla Strange. I'm not a resident of the Ringwood. And my address is 6 Jeffrey Court Otisville. That's upstate New York. And I don't have local issues to discuss. I've got external affairs, if that's okay? Is this the right time?
Can you just spell your names? Did you get me?
I've got some handouts with my name on it.
Okay.
Oh, good. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Your title is "Genocide by Scalpel," because that's a title given by one of the investigators into forced organ harvesting in China. Their updated research concludes that China's hospitals transplant between 60,000 and 100,000 vital human body organs each year. But China's no real organ donation program. Here in the U.S., with the most sophisticated organ transplant system of the world, patients may wait up to three years for a matching organ to become available. In China, however, waiting time is measured in weeks. An organ transplant tourist to China, cleaning one from England, can arrange a specific date for their operation, which effectively means that someone to be killed on their behalf on that date. It's a cultural taboo in China to donate one's organs after death. So what's the source of all these organs? Translation of these facts equates to tens of thousands of prisoners of conscience each year being killed for their organs. Most of these prisoners of conscience are Falagong practitioners, but also Tibetans, Uyghurs, and house Christians. They're routinely blood tested and their organs examined while held in China's forced labor camps, detention centers, and black jails. A 1984 regulation, ironically, in China decrees that they and the organs become the property of the state. On June 13, 2016, the U.S. House of Representatives unanimously passed Resolution 343, which in its summary section, quote, "condemns the practice of state-sanctioned forced organ harvesting in China," close quote. The European Parliament has also passed similar regulations. This has been happening for over 18 years, but still a deadly silence on this issue. That is why I come up with you, the elected and respected representatives of the community, to echo the heavy burden of this genocide, as acknowledged by the House. China's total control of its own media and way beyond. So it comes down to this type of word of mouth to divulge what's happening. Many dedicated researchers have gathered an enormous amount of data from current and archived hospital websites, medical journals, local media reports, telephone surveys, and other evidence for the 865 hospitals in China that have been performing these organ transplants. Some books have now been written and documentaries have been produced with more comprehensive information. And that is why I brought that little package for your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. Dan Gilbert, 62 Pinewood Drive. Since I wasn't here last month for the meeting, I was wondering if we're going to discuss today the lighting on the ballfields again? Is that going to be a topic of conversation today?
No, sir. It was not at this time. What happened last month is, we looked to apply to the Passaic County Open Space Fund for possible improvements up at the Stonetown homes. The type of design details about the lighting and such, we're many steps away.
Okay. Do we know the application grant? Is there a number? Have you applied for it yet?
The Passaic County Grant?
Yeah.
Yes.
You've applied for it? Is there a number? Is there, who did you apply to? So I can write them as well?
Oh, sure. It's Passaic County Open Space Grant, right, Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there an application number that taps to yours?
I don't think they get that many applications. There's only 16 towns in the county, so they'll only see 20 applications a year.
Okay.
So they'll know it's Ringwood's application.
And what, and where can I get a copy of the procedures that you need to follow in order to notify the residents of this?
If you call me in the office tomorrow, I can get you all the packet of information.
Yeah, we can, yeah. We can take care of that, certainly.
Okay. Because I don't necessarily think that it was followed properly, so we can go from there. All right. So I'll call you.
Okay, yeah.
So I'll call you, and then...
Yeah. Kelly and I will get you whatever you need, and, you know, we can, there's a process.
And when's the next time we foresee being this being discussed?
Ooh.
We'll be discussing it probably in June at the actual Passaic County meeting. I think it's, I think it's June, right?
It's either June or July. Just depends on when they're going to do it.
Okay. And are you required to notify the same residents as you did last time of this meeting?
I don't know that we are, but if you give me your name and number, I'll certainly give you all the dates that we have, so.
Well, is there a procedure for that? I mean, is there?
I'd have to ask them. It's their procedures, not ours.
Is there a rules and procedures for that? I mean, that's what I'm trying to find out, if you're following those rules and procedures, not just telling me it might be now, might be then.
No, we're following their procedure. They have an outline.
Okay. Can I, that's what I'm asking for. Can I see the, can we see the outline of that? Okay.
I think it's even available on their website.
Okay. And what would that website be?
No.
Passaic County NJ.
Just Passaic County NJ.
You know, work your way through down to open space. And I think, I think their procedures are there. I think every year they update the packet, which has all their rules, plus their application form in it. So you'll have, you'll have everything.
Now, is there a Ringwood rules? Is there a Borough rules for?
This is a Passaic County grant.
This is a Passaic County thing.
No. But we would expect that those type of improvements might be going to the planning board. They'll also probably have to go to the school board. The school board is the owner of the property. The Borough has a lease on it. The planning board might have an interest in taking a look at the actual particulars of the improvement that we make. In that case, then there's a whole other cascading bunch of public meetings that'll happen.
Okay.
And, and those will be noticed as the meetings are normally noticed. In the case of planning board, you have to notice people in a 200-foot radius. So there's, there'll be plenty of time for public input. It's not, it's certainly not, not closed out by any, by any stretch.
No, I didn't. I was hoping that wouldn't be the case, so.
No. I'd like to talk to you and find out what exactly what your concerns are, and we can, we can do that at another forum. I don't like to do back and forth thing during a public session, but I'm very interested to hear your opinions on it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, now when I move to closing public.
Second. Roll call on closing public?
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Any council members want to make any remarks on what we heard of public session, or should we keep rolling?
I do want to make a remark on the fact that the Borough said that the school board has, we have a lease on that property in Stonetown. I'd like to get a copy of that lease and see it, if possible. Also, I found out that there is a helicopter port at that property also. Is that correct?
There's a landing pad in the parking lot.
Right. And with parking, sometimes that gets obstructed. Is that correct?
Occasionally.
So I did have a concern about, you know, if it's going to be utilized more, if that would be something that we had taken into consideration when deciding whether or not to put this turf there.
Typically, all the helipads, what happens, no matter whether we land at Hewitt School or we land at St. Catherine's, or we land at, at the Stonetown Ball Field, the police and the fire department go and get the cars moved out of all those parking lots. It's really a parking lot that they have designated with coordinates for a helipad. So that's how, that's how it works in all the parking lots. St. Catherine's is the same. It's really, it's a parking lot for the church. We just happen to have it as our designated helipads for that area.
Okay. And as far as putting that at the high school, is that just not an option? Why was that abandoned, that opportunity? No, not the turf field.
It was, it's not abandoned.
It's something that's still in a possibility?
It's still considered consideration, sure.
It's still in consideration? Okay. Good.
Yeah, but the main concern was the actual use that we, Ringwood, would actually get out of it. Many members of the REC commission were concerned that they would not have as much access because the Lakeland is basically filled up. And in past experiences, our REC commissions had problems when they were promised an opportunity to use Lakeland. Currently, that they didn't meet their obligations. So our concern was sinking money into something that our residents really wouldn't get the opportunity to probably use as much as we like. Okay? And that was, that was the main concern that was voiced, and, yeah, we would need the representatives of Lakeland to kind of give us more confidence in, yeah, using the 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night is not what we're looking for. We're looking to get use out of it when our REC people need it. And we didn't get, we didn't get the feeling that that was going to happen. That's why we were preferring to have it in Ringwood. This way, Ringwood controls the field and controls how our team uses it, so.
But the cost would be quite a bit higher, wouldn't it, to have to do it over in Stonetown as opposed to the high school? So it would be for our taxpayers who are concerned about cost?
In the long-term picture, we're probably going to need both.
Yeah, because our athletes go to the high school, and as Ryan had mentioned, yeah.
Our athletes go to the high school, but, but our, our local REC programs have that much programming that they're probably going to need two artificial turf fields to access. So at some point, that's probably going to, you know, we would like to see both happen.
Okay. I'm just concerned because the residents have a concern, and I know if it was my backyard, I might feel the same way. So that's why I wanted to bring that up. And also, with the concern about the taxes, I saw Murphy's budget also. The taxes that you see increasing, I think, are on corporations and on millionaires, so I don't think it's going to affect the Ringwood residents that much. But one of the things I did see in his budget that I think will have a great impact here is an increase in school funding for Ringwood of 5%, which I think would be very beneficial after the cuts that we saw to our school program last year. So I do share your concerns about taxes, but with the big tax breaks that corporations and billionaires just got, a little bit more to help the state of New Jersey probably wouldn't hurt our pocketbooks too much right here in town. I don't know about you, but I don't have too many millionaire friends hanging out in Ringwood. The other thing about the Superfund site that you have brought up, my position hasn't changed. I think that our insurance is there to protect us. It isn't a fact of us getting hit with a tax bill by doing a cleanup. I think the most important thing is that we protect our water for our local residents as well as the 3.5 million people who depend upon our reservoir. I would hate for Ringwood ever to become the next Flint. This is not something that I think is an option, and there's no amount of money that can put, you can put a price tag on putting our water in jeopardy. And that's where I stand on that issue. So thank you for your question.
Anybody else?
I will say I will apologize to everyone because I'm looking at my phone in a way that I don't usually, and I'm behaving myself and not saying much because I want to hopefully vote on something. But I have to catch a flight tonight, so I will be, I will be heading out and heading to the airport when my phone tells me is the optimal time that my ride has arrived. So I'll apologize and come back on a number of topics next time.
Just right. Yes, yes.
And be like, can you do that? Can you hand it in advance?
Okay. Moving, moving right along. New business. Introduction by Title of Ordinances. And we have three ordinances this evening. The other, the other ordinances on the, that are listed on the agenda, they're going to be held for either introduction of the, introduction of the budget or for further attorney review. Counselor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. The first ordinance will be ordinance 2018-01, if I have the motion to read by title.
Got it. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Okay. An ordinance amending Chapter 18, Water and Sewer, the revised ordinance of the Borough of Ringwood, Section 18-9, Charges for Water Service, Part D, Water Consumption Rates to Amend Fees. I'll recite a resolution. Resolve that, ordinance 2018-01, as read by title, was introduced. And second reading will occur on, that is, April 3, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. at the municipal building, and the Borough Clerk is directed to publish a copy of this ed-ordinance in the official newspaper of the municipality.
Do we have a motion?
Subtle. Second.
Second. Any discussion? Yes, Mr.?
Would you like me to give you a little bit of a background?
Sure, please. That'd be helpful.
We, every year, we do some amendment to the water fees. Our fees are significantly lower than all the other towns around us. This equates to about a 4.5% increase. We have some very onerous requirements this year from the DEP. We have some, a lot more, we have to do all of our valve testing. We have, there's a lot more things that are coming down the pike. We've also had a very dry, a very wet year last year, so our revenues are way off, and we can only budget based upon revenues. And there are some things in here that we've adjusted. Some of the costs for final reads went from $20 to $30. We, we adjusted the labor rates according to our employee contracts. We, and we adjusted the actual gallonage. So as an example, for under 5,000 gallons, it went from $38.57 to $40.31. So, and all the rest, all the way around, the water rates are about 4.5% increase. Size of meter settings went from $77.09 to $80.56. So those are the, those are the type of increases that are in this. Generally speaking, the only people, things that people really care about are the water rates, and that's about a 4.5% increase, which still leaves us well below every other municipality in the area.
Very good. We have a motion. Second. Any other discussion? Take a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Upstein.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Okay. Our next ordinance we have is 2018-02, revised in building fees, counsel?
And a motion to read by title, please.
Subtle. Second.
Roll call, read by title?
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Okay. An ordinance amending Chapter 12, Building and Housing, the revised ordinance of the Borough of Ringwood, to amend Section 12-1.4 fees. I'll recite a resolution. Resolve that, ordinance 2018-01, being as hereby introduced with second reading on April 3, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. at the municipal building, and the Borough Clerk is directed to publish a copy of the ordinance in the official newspaper of the municipality.
Okay. Do we have a motion on that resolution?
Subtle.
Jim?
Second.
Second, Ferretti. Any discussion? Mr. Heck, do you want to lighten this here?
This, I will do the best I can. This is an ordinance that came from the Building Department, partially due to state changes in regulation. So I'm going to read what, I asked him to give me a little cheat sheet because there's a lot of changes in here, both up. Some things are going away, some things are going up a little bit. The DCA requires that a few ordinance be reviewed periodically. As building regulations change and new tech, new technologies in the fields evolve, the schedule needs to be changed to keep us updated with the changes. The ordinance is reviewed yearly, and the last change was in 2010. Adjust the fee, some of the things that happen is they adjust the fee schedule so that the associated fee is apportioned appropriately for the labor required to do the particular job. We removed the roofing and siding fee from the schedule. March 5, 2018, the DCA re-categorized some of the work permits so they no longer are required for most of the roofing and siding replacements, as well as some of the interior renovations. So some of those fees are coming out because the DCA now says you no longer need a permit for some of those things, so we had to adjust their fees. It's added some fees for mechanical subcode. The DCA developed a mechanical subcode to reduce the burden on the homeowner. They used to have to wait for two inspectors, and now with the new mechanical aspect of it, they only have to wait for one. One person can do, can inspect both aspects of it. You don't have to have a plumbing and whatever. I think electrical was the other one. This was previously covered by, I should have just read further. This is previously covered by the plumbing subcode and the fire subcode. And we've been practicing this for many years, and now our ordinance will align with what the state regulations say. We did adjust some fees to match the state schedule for the UCC. We add provisions for charges to applicants for emergency call-outs. Sometimes there's an emergency call-out where they need us to come on a Saturday to no fault of our own. So we did put, we never had a fee in there for that. So we did put a fee in for that kind of thing. They did adjust a few of the fees up. Again, they're much lower than, than all the communities around us, because we want to encourage people to get permits. We don't want them to not get permits. And this also waives the permit fees for public schools, firehouses, ambulance corps, municipal owned buildings. And that's what we've been doing anyway, but now our ordinance will be in align with, with what the UCC says, the new regulations, and our common practice.
Okay. Any other discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
And that's what we've been doing anyway. But now, our ordinance will be in align with what the UCC says, the new regulations, and our common practice.
Any other discussion? Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Number three, we're not.
Number three, we are going to, we're not, we're going to hold that for.
Hold that for budget reduction. Ordinance number 2018-04.
Again, this is from the Fire Prevention Bureau. Fire Prevention, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Motion and a second first.
Okay, motions read by title.
I was rolling right through it.
Mr. Heck, do you have a motion to read by title?
I'll move it. Second.
Move, sign, number Martucci. Noonan. Roll call and read by title.
Sure. Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Okay, an ordinance amending Chapter 15, Fire Prevention and Protection, of the revised ordinance of the Borough of Ringwood, to amend Section 15-1.8, Additionally Required Inspections and Fees in Section 15-2.3, Application for Inspection and Required Fee. I'll recite a resolution. Resolve that ordinance 2018-04. BAN is hereby introduced with second reading on April 3, 2018, at 7:30 PM at the municipal building. And the Borough Clerk is directed to publish a copy of the ordinance in the official newspaper of the municipality.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Sub move. Second.
Second. Mr. Heck, can you?
Yes.
Provide some color commentary.
This is from the Fire Prevention Bureau, and this ordinance hasn't been changed since 2008. And this has adjusted the smoke alarm inspection fees to match the state fee schedule in the UFC. And it's adjusted the commercial inspection fee appropriately for the labor. I think it's a $20 increase in the commercial fire inspection. And that's what this ordinance does.
Very good. Any questions, discussion?
Fire is bad, we shouldn't expect.
Take a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Very good. We will not be doing 2018-05.
We're holding that?
We're going to hold that.
Okay.
Next on the agenda are resolutions.
You have one more.
We have one more? Yes, we do.
Oh, yes.
Sorry, it just happened today.
Yep.
That's why it's colored.
Okay. Counselor, this is 2018-06.
You need this color.
In red.
Yes.
Yes, or the, yeah.
Lovely orange. I know, sorry.
This is 2018-06. Again, a motion to read this one by title, please.
Motion. Martucci?
Second.
Mr. Bolton? Roll call, please, read by title.
Sure. Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Spear?
Yes.
An order cement Chapter 2, Administration, Article 8, Administrative Policies and Procedures, revised ordinance of the Borough of Ringwood, to add Section 2-62, Sale of Borough of Ringwood Centennial Memorabilia.
And could we have a motion on that, please?
Second.
And second, Mr. Ferretti. Discussion, Mr. Heck.
I received this from the committee, Councilman Bolton, relative to selling some items for the centennial celebration. And this just kind of sets the fees by which that they may sell items, whether they sell shirts or caps. So, this kind of outlines that, so that they can sell them and put this into a fund dedicated towards the centennial celebration. I will yield to.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, essentially, my understanding is that without the ordinance, then we would have to sell at cost, or we wouldn't be able to roll the funds towards specific activities. So, even though we're just getting going, and we have to figure out, you know, exactly which of the items we definitely want to pursue, and what they're going to look like, et cetera, by getting the ordinance going, we can, you know, be up and running sooner and hopefully fund some additional things for the year without hitting the budget.
Mayor, this is much like a rec ordinance for their fees. It goes into a special account designated for that function.
The same thing for the yard sale.
Yeah, yard sale.
Same thing.
Okay, any further discussion? Do we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Take a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. And now, we move to resolutions.
Mayor, 2018-77 and 78, I would recommend that we carry when we do the budget, the relative to the budget.
Very good.
And I'll go directly to 2018-79. This is where, as the Chief Financial Officer has certified, the funds are available for the payment of the current bill list in the amount of $362,833.57. Supplemental payments in the amount of $3,471,165.78 to merchant services fees in the amount of $187.75 to be credited to the following accounts, for a total of $3,834,187.10.
I'll move it. Second.
Any discussion?
Can we hold back any payments at the county?
No, you cannot hold back any payments at the county.
Not if you want us to keep our license. Approximately $3 million of this goes to Lake Land and the Ringwood Board of Education.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Epstein?
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-80, Resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $5,833,181 in bond anticipation notes for the Borough of Ringwood in the County of Passaic, New Jersey. This is, every year, you have to roll over our bond anticipation notes, and this is just a rollover of existing debt. At some point, we'll go to permanent funding with this, but this is rolling over. And it tells you in here what ordinances they were that you're actually rolling over. But this is not authorizing any new debt. This is just continuing the loan on the old debt.
Any discussion? Do we have a rule motion?
Second.
I really haven't had a chance to go back and look at each of these resolutions and to fully understand this. I was wondering if it would be possible, since we are moving into budget time, for the council members, especially new ones like myself, to have the opportunity to meet with our town auditor, Chuck Farioli, to fully understand all the budget processes. For instance, with this bond money, if there's anything remaining in the bond, can that be redirected, or does it go into surplus?
No, if there's something in a bond ordinance, it has to be used specifically for that bond ordinance. And it retains, it stays in that account until such time as that ordinance gets used for whatever that purpose is. So, it doesn't go into the budget. This is separate and apart. This is, these are things, items that had a specific purpose in the actual ordinance that was drafted, and you can only use it for that. I can sit and go through.
What if there's surplus?
There isn't such thing as surplus. You either, you either pay it down, or you.
Or you move ahead. Okay.
Some of them are funded, some of them are not funded. But I can sit and go through all of that with you in each bond ordinance. And it outlines in there exactly, like in here, it tells you.
It tells you where to go, but I got it on Friday and researching it and getting it totally digested by Tuesday wasn't something that I was able to fully understand and comprehend. I mean, it's Section 3 pursuant to a bond ordinance of borough entitled bond ordinance providing. I mean, there's so much here to really delve into that I haven't had an opportunity to do so. And with the upcoming budget, would it be possible to meet with the auditor?
We certainly, I mean, the Finance Committee is going to also meet, but we could certainly, you know, if that's your pleasure.
Well, the order is going to be here for budget adoption. You can hold your questions. I don't know when we could have them, I don't know if we can have them in the executive session that we can just, you know, shoot the breeze with them. You know, there's nothing, there's nothing there to actually, you know, there's no reason to have an executive session in such a fashion. I think so. You know, I can understand your desire to do so.
Right.
But I don't know if there's a mechanism, you know, hold out until we get to budget, you know, to actual budget, you know, adoption, say, is when you're going to see Chuck. Unless you want to have them in at another meeting, and then you can, you know.
Oh, well, we ask them to come to.
We can ask them, yeah, we can ask them to come into another meeting. Probably not April 3, because that's really looking like kind of busy that meeting.
Yeah, sorry.
And we do have two April meetings, correct?
Yes, we do.
I do, so maybe we can ask Chuck if he would, you know, if he would come in and just have a discussion with you in the public session. Recommend getting questions to him prior.
Right.
It just makes, you know.
Okay, so I'll get his email.
Easier way to use your professional's time.
Absolutely. So, if I can get his email address, I'll be happy to.
No, no, how about, how about we make the request?
Through the town?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, how about we make any and all requests through the office of the manager?
That'll be just fine.
Great, thank you.
I'll submit my questions. Thank you.
And I can get you these ordinances as well.
Okay, thank you.
They're all. I hope.
Thanks.
Questions?
Yes.
Well, I think one of them was if he can sit. And it could go either way, because I know there would be questions during adoption. But I think the desire was for a little bit more of the 101. That might be repetitive for people with more miles under their belt. If that's not desirable, then public session is completely fine. But it didn't have to be like everybody around the table unless that was the way to go, just to clarify.
A private meeting would be fine, just to get us up to speed.
Mayor, I've been trying to schedule the attorneys to come in and talk to the full group as well. I mean, maybe I'll try to have a sub-meeting of the council so that we don't have quorum, and then try to have one outside of here if you want. However you guys want to handle it, I can arrange it.
We can do that. Yeah, we can do that and just have our new members meet with Chuck.
Yeah.
Very good. I like, I like to take any opportunity I can to listen to Chuck.
Okay.
Don't matter how long you're here, you're never going to see this stuff clearly. It's designed to be opaque.
Is it?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, you're not going to see it clearly. It doesn't matter how long you're here. But, so that's why I want to listen to Chuck. Whenever Chuck decides he's going to speak, I want to go listen. I want to be, I want to hear it. But that's fine. I think that will work. That's probably a more efficient use of the time.
Okay.
Or we can advertise a special meeting, that's all. So, however you guys want to decide, if you want to be here.
No, I don't think we need a special meeting. We've got two meetings coming up in April, two in May. We don't, I don't think we need a special in there. Unless we're going to do an executive session with just the super fun stuff.
Well, I mean, how much is he going to be able to go over in public session?
Well, I mean, he can go over, he can certainly go over this type of stuff. If you're looking for accounting-type things, I don't know that you're going to want necessarily the public to have to listen to all that. It's pretty dull, but, I mean, he could do it all on the public. It doesn't really much matter. Or we could have a subcommittee meeting and just do it that way. If they, I don't know what questions they have, so I can't really answer. None of it is executive session, so.
So, we can't do it in an executive session. It'd have to be a committee.
We just can't have four of you, that's all, unless we're going to advertise.
So, maybe figure out the questions and then figure out the right plan of attack.
To deal with them.
Is Chuck?
Pardon me?
Is Chuck? What he's.
Okay.
Let's ask.
Or maybe Jim.
Okay.
But in the meantime, bond anticipation notes. What's going on right now, I believe, is that there is bond anticipation notes that have these things rolled into them, and they are coming to expire. And we're going to roll them over into new bond anticipation notes until such a time that we find permanent financing for the bonds. And, you know, there'll be, you know, that can come up at any time, depending on when our auditor, you know, thinks it's most advantageous to the borough to move these things from rolling bond anticipation notes into permanent financing. So, this, there is nothing, the decisions to borrow the money have already been made. This is really just a ministerial type of thing to keep the financing moving along and not get ourselves jammed up. I don't know what happens necessarily if a bond anticipation note kind of gets old. I don't know what happens.
Or no, we're not going to let them expire.
I don't care to find out. We just go and when our auditor advises us that it's time to roll over the notes, we roll over the notes. So, do we have any further discussion on Resolution 2018-80?
We already covered one of my questions, when the conversion happens and those factors. So, it's good to know that that comes from Chuck, and we can talk through it.
Assistant Chuck, and he bases it on current interest rates, how much we have. A lot of the questions you asked today come from Chuck based on last 10 years of borrowings and what's advantageous for us to do. Okay, we don't make that decision here, so.
That is good to know. And then, with the existing costs for these, they're represented in our current debt servicing line. So, the debt servicing costs that we look at, this is already reflected.
When you read through there, it tells you what the dollar amount is.
Those ordinances, numbers.
What the ordinance number is and what the balance is. Like, as an example, this says, you know, the section number one, appropriating $2,800,000, authorizing $2,665,000, because we had to have down payment money, bonds or notes for the borough financing for final adoption in the ordinance in 2014. And it was ordinance number 2014-04. And now, we're rolling over $1,944,081, and this is for the water department, so.
Skyline Lakes Drive, Skyline Lakes Tank. Skyline Drive Tank.
So, in each one, in each section, they give you the description of what you originally borrowed, what you're borrowing now, and what the ordinance number was, so that you can track it.
No further discussion? Well, up.
Oh, he might come.
Didn't you phone buzz yet?
Yeah, you know.
Ooh, ooh, that was.
Somebody text him. Yeah, would you please?
Only because you said that, it actually has arrived.
Please finish your question.
In a nutshell, just a rundown. So, the bond ordinance originally, just going with the first one, was 2.8. We wound up only issuing 2.6 and change. Then the balance on it that we're rolling over now is still 1.9. Am I recounting that right?
Correct.
Yes, yes. And that difference is the down payment, that 2.8 to the 2.665 is the down payment. And then, there's the, what was expended out of that.
And there's payments.
Yes.
Right.
We've been paying it down as we go.
That's why it's lower.
So, that's the balance.
Yes. Yes, now it's time to find a better vehicle for managing that.
Well, we're just rolling it over into another BAN, but eventually, we're going to go to a permanent.
He might come back in May and make a recommendation to permanently bond some of this stuff. Which we do, when was the last time, last year or the year before?
In two years.
Yeah, two years.
Interest rates were fairly favorable. It made sense for us to, you know.
We bundled some of these bonds together into one vehicle.
Yes.
Make the payments at a better rate.
And I know they're like fixed costs to going to the market on bond counts and all, so you want to kind of.
It's based on.
Exactly.
Gather them together.
You know, with Moody's, yeah, well, credit rating is going to be sheer, so.
Which is a very good thing.
Any further discussion? I'll take a motion, please, on.
I have a motion and a second.
We do?
Yes.
That's why we're having all this discussion, isn't it? And how about we go with a roll call?
Sure. Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Epstein.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
And with that, thank you, everybody.
Have a safe trip, Brian.
Thank you.
The next thing on our agenda are the consent agenda. And when you're ready, Kelly, please.
I'm ready. Whereas the mayor and council of the Borough of Ringwood has reviewed the consent agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions, now therefore be resolved that following resolutions on the consent agenda are hereby approved. 2018-81, Approval of Consent. 2018-82, Authorized Redemption Tax Sale Certificate Various. 2018-83, Approval of Voided Checks. 2018-82, authorized redemption tax sale certificate various. 2018-83, approval of voided checks. 2018-84, approval of the 2018 Chilton Health Education Agreement in the amount of $3,900.
Yeah.
2018-85, professional services payment for the water system computer modeling, contract number 2016-105, in the amount of $6,110. And 2018-86, authorized refund for the board of adjustment of an extension fee of $50 to Ms. Rabitsky of Bloomingdale Animal Shelter.
Good. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion, but I got a question.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, could get further discussion, explanation on the, on 84 and 85.
The health education agreement?
Yeah.
We have a health education agreement with Chilton Hospital for some of our health education classes and items that, you know, this is something that was a reoccurring agreement. We, we use that both for the Borough of Ringwood and Wanacue with, with the Health Department for the education.
Such as?
There, there's a lot of different programs that they, they bring in. Kelly, you know?
They help out with the stroke clinic, different, some of the different clinics as all, as well as some of the educational classes that, that they have.
As well as some of the, even some of the exercise programs and some of the, you know, some of the health programs that the Health Department runs.
Nutrition.
Nutrition and all that stuff, you know, in the spring we're doing that, get out and walk. And a lot of that stuff comes in conjunction with Chilton Hospital.
And the water.
You don't have a health educator here on staff, full-time.
The water system modeling.
Pardon me?
The water system modeling.
Water system modeling. Is that, that's something we've been working over the last bunch of years. We're trying to have a model of our whole system so that we, you know, we, we can see what, what valve turns on, what things. And when you show up, you know where the water valves are for the individual homes and the shut-offs and, and, you know, how, how we can affect the system from a, from a computer model.
Well, we gathered a lot of data from that.
We've gathered data over.
Summer interns, correct?
Tremendous amounts, yes.
Yeah, we saved a lot of money by using summer interns to actually do the GIS work. And we have a consultant now that's taking that data. And that's why you see bills in here occasionally for it. They're taking that data and they're putting it into our program. And we have different layers. We can strip off, you know, different layers, you know, if we just want the eight-inch main, we want to know where the valves are, we want to know where the hydrants are.
The higher pressures, the low pressure stuff.
Yeah, there's, there's all kinds of information on all the layers of the GIS mapping that we can do. And that's what they're doing now, so that hopefully by the end of the summer, we can have a model in place for the actual water system. Because we have a lot of high-pressure, low-pressure systems, because as you can imagine, hills and valleys, you know, we have a lot of pump stations. There's, there's a lot to our system.
Didn't the state just change?
Pardon me?
Didn't the state just change some requirements?
The state changed the requirements for the water system relative to some of the valves and things, which the GIS will work in, in conjunction with to a certain degree, because we have to go to each one of these valves and actually manually operate them according to the new rules to make sure that each valve works, I think it's every couple of years. But you have to have a valve program. So yes, this will tie into that eventually once we have that, that program in place.
I mean, no further discussion? Take a roll call, please.
Sure. Councilmembers Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Next on the agenda is manager's report.
I know you're all going to be upset.
15 inches of snow forthcoming.
Yeah, we're looking for our third nor'easter tomorrow. Yeah, I don't have a manager's report for you this evening. As you know, I was on vacation. And we're going to be having our manager. We were going to have all these other things on the agenda, so I put it for next, for next meeting.
Okay. Which might get abbreviated and expanded upon on the 17th.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Attorney's report. Mr. Klimak, sir.
Well, since Scott was so brief, maybe I'll pick up the slack.
No.
I have one item. It's a resolution authorizing a tax foreclosure. As you know, periodically the borough fires tax liens, that is, people do not pay their taxes. At the tax sale, a private investor doesn't purchase it, so it falls, it defaults to the borough. And we occasionally then, after a period of time, we have the right to foreclose on that property, like a bank would foreclose on a, on a property. And as we say to another case, we do not foreclose on residential properties. These are all commercial or vacant. Well, we have another property here. It's a, it's a vacant property. It consists of about 30 acres. There are taxes due in the approximate of $54,491. This property was the subject of litigation or tax sale, oh, several years ago. The taxes are all paid and then they, they've gone back into default. Okay? So it's, for the record, it's block 751.04, lot 1.01. It's owned by a, a party, I don't know if it's an individual or a company located in the state of California. It was owned by a Wall Street firm up until about six months ago. So, uh, I would like to recite a resolution. Resolution authorizing foreclosure under the INREM foreclosure act and establishing the tax foreclosure list of liens to be foreclosed. Be resolved that municipal council of the borough of Ringland and county of Passaic State in New Jersey hereby determines that the borough of Ringland forecloses by summary proceedings in REM as provided by the INREM Tax Foreclosure Act. The tax sale certificate is held by it is listed in the attached tax foreclosure list prepared by Debbie Buchanan, tax collector of the borough of Ringland, dated March 2018. And the, the list consists of only one property. It's attached to this resolution.
And Kelly, this would be Resolution 87?
Correct.
Okay. And do we have a motion?
Well, I just had a question. Is this property located in the industrials area?
No, it's located, is that, is that the end of Fountain Drive? It's 30 acres.
It's the open space around Finch area.
Yeah, the Finch Road, 30 acres.
Okay, 30 acres. And we've been, yeah, we've been, through foreclosure, the town seems to have accumulated a few lots in the industrial zone and now this one. Do we have the option of selling this to Green Acres to realize some money from the sales?
Well, this, this lot has a, has a very interested, interesting history. But we ask, when you, we do acquire a lot, okay, we then have the, have several options. Number one, depending on its size, to offer it to, to a neighboring property or if it's residential. Or you can put it up for public auction, okay? Or if you want to sell it to a governmental agency or quasi-governmental agency, you can negotiate directly with them. But once you, you, you know, once the borough acquires ownership, then you have options as to what you want to do. Or keep it and use it for your own use. Yeah.
I will caution you, though, that I always discourage you from buying properties because they're attractive nuisances, there's dumping issues, there's all kinds of things, and we end up having to clean them up. And when there's trees down on neighbors' properties, they call us to come take care of those trees. And when, so, so I always ask you guys to be careful when you buy property, because when you buy those properties, you also buy the liability that's associated with them and the expenses for maintaining them.
Well, we aren't buying these properties. We're just.
No, I understand, but.
Well, for closing, we'll have the ownership, and then you have the, the option as to what to do.
Right. And with the Highlands Act and the inability to develop most of this property, I thought Green Acres would probably be the best place to realize, you know, money for the properties, since they're no longer taxable.
Right. Well, if the people do not redeem, they, they can redeem and pay until we get a judgment of.
Oh, I see.
But if, but if they don't, then that's certainly something you can consider, once you get title. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Do we have a motion? No.
Motion.
Do we have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Freddie.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
I have nothing further.
Mayor, I have one executive session. It's a personnel matter.
Very well. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Heck. Counsel, can you recite a resolution?
Yes, resolve that the mayor and council enter executive sessions, discuss the personnel matter, that minutes of the meeting be maintained and be available for inspection or conclusion of the matter, provided same can be released under the Open Public Meetings Act. The public advise that when the municipal, when the municipal council returns from the executive session, it may take formal action on any matter discussed therein, or may take formal action on any other matter.
Before we go into executive session, can I bring up one?
Well, we are going to, we're going to pass this resolution.
Okay.
Then we're going to go continue through our agenda.
Okay.
Which has general public comment, and then mayor and members of the council get to speak. And then we'll go into executive session on the, that, based on that resolution.
Okay, thank you.
So a motion and a second on that resolution.
A motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. And roll call, please.
Councilmembers Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Heck, Mr. Klimak. Next on the agenda is general public comment. Anybody wishing to address the mayor and council, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Try to keep your comments brief and non-repetitive. Thank you.
Hello. Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Peter Sando, 24, High Point Lane. I just wanted to ask what's going on with the problem with Channel 77?
Okay. Do you want to answer that briefly, or do you want to wait till after we close public?
Doesn't, doesn't matter. We, the Brooklyn Electric Transformers in front of the building blew up, I blew up just before the last council meeting. It fried the server inside the, inside the studio. We sent the server out to be repaired, to see if it was repairable or whether we had to replace it. At first, they didn't take purchase orders, so I put it on my credit card. And they just got back to us the other day with the price to fix it, and I authorized it to be fixed.
So it's not fixed yet?
There's more to the server, though. Is the server in?
Well, there was a lot of other things that, yeah, unfortunately, the electrical surge through the building caused some damage, but that was one of the items that got.
Who, who, who do you get it repaired with? The, the people that you have the contract with the server with, or cable vision?
The company who, the company who built the unit.
Right. Okay. Well, well, I, you know, just know that in my business, if I have an essential piece of equipment down, I get it repaired within a day. So I don't think the council, last council meeting was televised, right?
Yes, it was.
It was? Okay. Well, is it on, is, are they on the internet?
No.
Because, you know, some of us don't have cable vision. And probably a good number of people these days don't have cable vision. So we rely on the internet to be able to view our meetings and, you know, Channel 77, our public access. And I know that, you know, that, you know, now we have an opportunity to, to have some bipartisan discourse, and it's an important time, especially with the budget meetings coming up. So I'm hoping that you get it going pretty quick. I think it should be top priority.
It's being televised right now.
Right. We, we don't have cable vision, so we, we, you know, will we be able to view it later on in the week, online?
When the server is back, we'll be able to put everything online again. But until we have the server back, we can't really do anything.
Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
I know that on the website, it says that you can view the meetings on YouTube. And I don't think any meetings have gone on YouTube, unless I'm looking in the wrong place, since October, since like, right before the election. So, I mean, you know, like, for people like us that don't have cable vision, we would expect to see the meetings on YouTube. That would, is that hard to do? My question.
We, we can't do anything with, with any of these items until such time, I believe, as the server is back. The server, hopefully, will be back very quickly, and we can, we can get this.
So the YouTube is dependent upon the server?
It's kind of esoteric. You have?
No, I, I used to be on the cable TV committee. I'm asking technical questions.
I am not a technical person, so I can't answer that question. Alls I know is, I paid the guy to fix the thing. We don't have a spare $8,000 item sitting around here. So as soon as it gets back here, we'll put it back in there and it'll be up and running.
All right. I just want, you know, I'm concerned that, that since October, no meetings have been up on YouTube. It's kind of, it's, I don't know, it's not, not right. The other question I have is on the AstroTurf field. Have, has it been cleared with the Board of Education with the restrictions on their lease? I don't know if you want to answer me now or discuss it after.
Wait.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Vivian Milligan, 31, Peters Mine Road. First thing, I have a handout for the mayor and councilmembers.
Thank you. Thank you. You have enough to go over.
And now I want to make a comment on the handout. I received this in the mail on March 16th, okay? And personally, it really doesn't bother me, you know, to make me angry or get me upset or anything. I just wanted to state the fact that, hmm, what the word is, some people should learn to try to, you know, look up the definition. And I'm not mad, I'm not mad, because what I have, I might not have money like some people, but I have pride. And I'm proud of where I come from, you know? And, no, my film has been here for centuries. And, and unfortunately, I'd like to say is, I had pity on those who think they're better than me, because I feel nobody is better than me. So this is why I won't let this knock me down. And, you know, so, but this, I'm pretty sure a lot of residents of Ring would probably feel this way about me, but, you know, I just want you to be aware.
But this is being televised. You want me to read it?
No, no, that's fine. You know, it's no big deal. I, you know, but, you know, I just wanted to make, you know, make a statement on it and, and tell them that they thought they were hurt.
What does this have to do with us?
Well, what do you mean? It's a, what does it have to do with Jews?
Yeah.
It's stating, it's kind of like, this is a town that has a lot of racial tension, all right? So we're going to go back to all that stuff again.
So somebody put this in your mailbox?
Somebody mailed this to me, yes. So, and again, I just wanted, you know, to be a known fact that they picked the wrong person if they thought that was going to show any violence or whatever, you know? I'd just like the people that live in Ringwood to have an idea of the people that they're living around, you know? Again.
We don't condone this, so.
Well.
But is it in your county?
Huh?
I, you know, I just, you know, I'm not going to make no big issue about it. I just wanted to make my point, you know?
This, this is an example for all of you that have, you're in a position to make a difference and to make a change. And this is in your community. This is happening next door. And this is your responsibility as public service officers to make change in your community. This is disgusting.
I'm sorry, you're supposed.
And this is the truth.
Supposed to give your name and address.
And that is unfortunate.
You're supposed to give your name and address.
My name is Melissa DeLeon Milligan, and I live in Greenwood Lake, Sterling Forest, New York. But my children come to this area, and I do a lot of community service in this area. And this is my mother-in-law.
Oh, so you're really, now you see why she's here, everybody? You know?
It says that this happened on TV where?
Well, in all honesty, I don't remember it, you know?
No, I don't remember any.
But I mean, you know, so things could be happening in private, whatever. But my point, you know, I haven't, but I just wanted to, I'm sorry, you know, just to make a statement about the fact that, hmm, it's not making me weak, it's just making me stronger, you know?
I had no doubt.
So it is what it is, you know? So when I'm, and I just, all right, I'm going to move away from here, because I'm going back to my bereavement class, and I'm just going to say, everybody have a good night. See, I don't have hatred. And I'm just saying, God bless you all, you know?
Thank you. You too.
This world has got too many hatreds.
And I'm just going to tail something on the end of this. As I said, you guys are public service officials. And I understand, appointed, not elected. That shocked me. I didn't even know that that was tonight. The mayor, is my understanding. No?
Yeah. You need four votes to be mayor.
Okay. Anyway, that's not what I'm here to discuss. But just based on what you have in front of you and the tension that is in this environment and in this community, I just ask that you take the time to go home and think about a lot of things and what you can do in the positions that you sit to make a change and make things different. To set the tone for change and to walk together united and to put things like this to rest in whatever way that you can. Because I have children that bear the last name, that some people are so ashamed of, and it's one of many last names.
I'm proud of it.
And I'm proud of it, too. But unfortunately, there's too much of this nonsense that goes on. So that's all I ask.
We don't condone this any shape or form. And basically, anyone that we know of, okay, we do not allow to use any of this type of language.
Mm-hmm.
Or, you know.
It's there. It's, it's, it's around you. It's a culture. It's a, it's a, it's an opportunity to acknowledge it and to change it. It's, it's, whether you condone it or not, I don't condone it either, but I don't deny it. And, and I do my best to make it better. For your children, for my children.
Absolutely.
And not just this community, but for anywhere. And that's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know.
This is flatter guessing.
It is. If it was on TV, there should be a recording.
Of course.
Before the parade, did that come out?
Anyone else public? See, no one moved to close?
We have a motion to close. Second.
Second.
Second on closing public. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Martucci?
Yes.
Councilmembers Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Next is mayor and members of the council. Mr. Freddie, comments this evening?
I hope everybody has successfully shoveled all the snow that's fallen so far and is ready for the next batch. I know my snow blower wasn't working last storm and I have not repaired it. Good luck. Please stay safe. Watch your pets and kids and old people who could walk outside and get lost, because everything looks different with snow on it. Be safe, be careful, help your neighbors. And, you know, let's just get through it together and enjoy the spring once it arrives. Look forward to seeing everybody on Saturday. Hopefully, we're all dug out. And have a great time at the parade.
Mr. Freddie's, be careful in the next snowstorm. It's probably going to snow till, it feels like it's going to snow until May. Again, look out for your neighbors and everybody, and hopefully you see everybody at the parade. Good family day.
Thank you. Mr. Davison?
I'm on the parade committee, and I will look into this.
Thank you, sir.
It's first I'm seeing this, anything like this. It's amazing.
Agreed.
Disturbing.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. O'Keefe?
Hi. Recently, the Green Team met this month, and there was a recommendation by the Green Team to have the municipality once again participate in the New Jersey Clean Energy Program by doing a free audit. These free energy audits are performed by skilled, experienced contractors, and the eligible facilities would include all our local government offices, our fire stations, any sanitation or community centers. It's also open to all nonprofits. This would include churches and the White Psychology Center, and also to our schools. So they're hoping that we, as a town, can move forward with doing another energy audit since it's absolutely free to the town and in the past has saved us money, and open an invitation to our schools and nonprofits to participate. And we'd like to even bring one of the New Jersey Clean Energy people down to answer any questions that the town might have or the schools might have.
Is there a deadline?
Is there a deadline? No, but we'd like to do it for Earth Day, kind of a symbolic. And also, it would qualify the Green Team for some points towards certification. So it is something that is on our agenda that we'd like to see the council move forward with in a timely manner. And also, we think it would benefit the schools and the nonprofits and the town itself in saving money on energy costs.
Okay. Anything else we want to, want to, want to have a discussion about that? Want to talk about that?
Yeah.
Continue? Nothing's free. It doesn't have a, there's no, there's no cost. We're not going to be writing a check, but, but there'll be time spent and such. And there's a lot of different buildings. We're going to have to have people going in and accompanying these folks through, through our buildings and such. I think what we, we should do is you have to send some kind of information out to, to the schools, the churches, whatever other target, that's what's the target audience for this year. Got to, got to send them some, some information to let them know to try to gauge interest in this here. I don't think-
Well, it's just an invitation to them to join us in this opportunity to do this audit.
Well, yeah, yeah. But I mean, you know, we would, you would, you would give them actual information as to far as what we, what we are, what we are talking about in this audit, what it would require of them, you know, that, that, that type of, that type of thing. I think that, you know, it sounds like a good idea. I have no objection to an energy audit. Sounds like a good thing. You know, I think last time around, we, we took some pretty good steps in, 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 you know, responding to the results of, of an energy audit.
Right.
I recognize that it's kind of like a prerequisite in your Green Team Sustainable New Jersey program there that you need to do an energy audit. It's one of those first things on the, on, on your to-do list.
It is something that benefits the town as well as the certification process, yes. I think Scott and I talked about it the other day, and he said the town realized the savings of $29,000 in the cost of implementing some of these energy-saving programs.
Yes.
So it is something to benefit the town, and hopefully, if the schools and the churches and the nonprofits determine they would like to join us, then they too would realize energy savings and the installation costs.
Who would pay for the installation costs?
Seventy percent of the installation costs would be paid for by the New Jersey-
Which is BPU really paying for that, right?
Yeah, right.
Ms. Hatt?
Yeah, listen, we had this program in eleven and twelve, and it was a very successful program. We did all the firehouses, the garage, the, the, the wellhouses and whatnot, and we replaced air conditioning, light bulbs, furnaces. It was, it was a very successful program. And I think the program was a hundred and some thousand dollars, and, and they paid for a good portion of that. I, I see no reason that we wouldn't want to do an energy audit. We, there was a lot of effort on the, on the finance office to get all the bills and to get all that stuff done, but, but we can certainly do that. I think that if, if in fact we're going to move to step B on the program, we would need to talk to the finance committee a little bit because, as you know, the budget is, is stretched. But, but there's a lot of things that you may get out of the energy audit that are kind of updates of what we've already done that we might be able to do in-house. So, so I don't see any reason why, why we wouldn't do that. So.
Yeah, I don't know. Any objections to, you know, to an energy audit, you know? Still looking at these fluorescent lights, you know, they're going to be changed out pretty soon.
Well, I would, I would look at doing the bigger buildings, the schools. I mean, the nonprofits are fine, but to me, there'd be a little more time and effort going to each location where the biggest bang for the buck would probably be the schools, this building, anything that has a large lighting supply, I think, first off, and then maybe do the smaller buildings at another time. I'm just trying to think of, you know, one shot. They could come in here, they can come into the school areas, and that would have the largest impact, I think.
It's a pretty onerous process. They come in and they get the amps off the motors, they, they record the model numbers. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a lengthy process. You know, things like the, the parking ride. You look at the parking ride, we don't have LEDs there, and we should have LEDs there.
Right.
So there are, there are some things that we could definitely benefit from, from a program like this. And, and I think it's, we're six or seven years out of it. It's, it's time to do it again.
I have just caution, though. I know the seventy percent sounds really good. Just to play slightly devil's advocate there, a lot of times during these, the seventy percent is covered by what's in the program. It's all the extras that are uncovered while you're implementing some of these things that we pay a hundred percent of. Okay?
Well, there isn't any onerous on you to move forward with it. It's just, you know, they give you the order-
I'm not against the order. I just caution implementing some of these things. The seventy percent can be slightly misleading because if they open up a motor or open up electrical panel and said, okay, we can put the new high-efficiency motor in, but the controls that control that motor aren't sufficient, then you've opened up a can of worms. So just-
Right. And then you can make a decision based on cost.
We did, we did live that, but I will still tell you that even with living some of the costs, and some of the costs might have been a little higher than what we would have contracted for, at the end, we did benefit because the amount that they give you in grant kind of overrode some of that stuff. I mean, yes, you're, you're correct.
Just approach costs, it's basically-
I would recommend that you go forward with the audit, and then we take a look at the audit and see what it comes up with, and if there's anything sizable, I'll be surprised because we replaced all the furnitures and furnaces and the air conditioners and the big ticket items already.
Good. So, yeah, the Green Team can kind of put together some kind of list of their target, their target-
Well, it's an invitation that we'll be extending.
Okay, so that, that the Green Team will be, will be doing that?
Yeah, we'll put together a letter. We'll send it out to the schools.
Put together a letter, yeah, put together-
Let them know that we're going to move forward.
Yeah, have it, have it come directly from the borough.
I don't like the word target.
You may want to jump that rate these days.
Yeah, especially after today. But yes, I understand. Our audience will, we will ask the schools to join us in this opportunity.
Instead of a letter, maybe.
Of what?
Instead of a letter, maybe, the conversation.
Yeah, or both. You know what? The, the best way to do it?
Yeah.
Have a conversation with somebody on the school board and send them the letter.
Okay.
Hey, got a letter coming your way. This is what it's about.
Right.
And it just, just-
Sure.
It pieces the wheels, and everybody feels, you know, feels involved. So, yeah, we have no, no issues about that.
O'Keefe was going to draft a letter for us to take a look at, and then we'll get it out in the borough.
And it would come out from the borough, right?
And we'll read it out. So.
Very good.
So I think that, I think she was waiting to talk to you folks tonight.
To make sure you wanted to move forward with it.
Very good.
I didn't want to, you know, put the words before the card. Okay. And would you like to have a representative come here and answer any of your questions regarding it?
I haven't seen any, any documentation. I haven't, I haven't seen anything.
I have some I can share with you.
At this, at this point, at this point, no.
Okay.
I would think that, that once you send the letter out, and people who might be participating might have questions, then we can have everybody listen to one type of-
Question, answer. Okay, sure.
Yeah, we could do that at some later point as opposed to-
Right.
Give me a complete packet. I'll have a whole packet to get ready to go.
Okay.
Whatever it is that you guys-
Very good.
-do list.
Will do. Thank you. I did want to ask if there's any update on the convent. One of my friends mentioned it to me the other day, that it seems to be, I mean, it's a beautiful entrance to the community, and yet it seems stalled over there with that steel.
I think it's stalled, and it sounds like the company is reorganizing. I don't, I don't know. They have a couple of different projects going, and so that's what I had heard last, but I don't have anything other than that factually, so.
Okay. And the other thing I was going to ask is if the council could meet with the landlords from the Fieldstone area. That seems to be another bone of contention in town. And we have so many vacant stores down there. I guess my question to the attorney is, is there anything like a vacancy tax that we can implement so that there would be some incentive to get some type of business in there?
No, no, there, there isn't. But in our discussions with the landlords, they are under, they do have an incentive to rent, to lease. They do not want vacant land that does not, vacant property does not generate income.
Right.
We don't know all their deals, all their details. We don't know their financial details, their interior details. But that's, that's one of the reasons, just to segue, why under affordable housing plans, we're trying to come up with creative ideas to, to generate, to make that a generated, income and tax generative area and serve other needs like affordable housing, shopping, et cetera. I know I'm jumping ahead on that.
Well, what is the status on that?
Pardon?
What is the status on that?
Well, what it is, is that, well, first, first of all, like, well, all right, I might, our planner of over fourteen years?
Tom Dunn?
Resignation, banished associates.
Oh, banished, okay.
So we are out of planning consultant, a key player in everything.
Okay.
So what we've done is we've, we've sent out solicitations to about nine other firms to see if they would be interested in representing us. But this is going to slow down the process because we have to bring a new person on board. We have to bring them up to speed. We have to see what their vision is. Does it comport with the vision that we've been discussing? How do they, how do they look, look at things? And in fact, we, we had a telephone conference with the court-appointed mediator just the other day to explain that. And to explain it to the other parties, their developed, their, their proprietors are also interested in this case. They're part of the case besides the, the owner, besides us and the Fair Share Housing Council. So that's, that's where we are there. So it's on a hold pattern right now. But what we, what we're doing is we're preparing pre-approval applications to the Highlands Commission. So they would look at the redevelopment site. This was just pre-approval. It's more in concept. That was under preparation when we got this letter of resignation. So that's, that's where we are.
Mayor, if you wanted to meet, I think you're on the redevelopment committee.
Yeah, I haven't, have we met? Because I haven't, yeah.
And I would think that it would be, I mean, you met the first time with Mr. Kleemack and Mr. Dunn originally when you first came on.
Originally, right, but since then.
And I think it's probably time for us also to have another committee meeting.
I think that'd be a good idea. Maybe when we get the planner on board, okay?
And would there be community input with the planner?
Well, if, no, yes.
There's a committee of the planning board that is going to be, that's going to be selecting through the resumes, and there'll probably be, be interviews with either that committee or with the planning board, you know, in, in full to, to select the planner.
Okay. And when we meet, is there a possibility to meet with the landlord?
Well, we could always, we, you know, with Scott, Scott, Scott could, he's been trying to meet and meeting with the landlords. We could always reach out again to discuss things with the landlord. He's free not to meet with us, of course.
Right, of course.
We have no legal process there.
Yeah.
But he's, he's aware of the company, I shouldn't say he, the company's aware of what we're trying to do. Scott has kept them advised of it. They have copies of what we're doing. They know exactly what we're doing. But as to, as to penalizing with some kind of tax because they don't have, they have, they have vacancies, we have no authority to do that.
I just know of a young entrepreneur that lives in town who has a business in Monique, and he was hoping to bring his business here to Ringwood. He met with the landlord. He was very excited. His business is growing over there in Monique, and he wanted to bring it here. I think it was a gym and a juice bar that he wanted to open up, and basically, you know, the proceedings fell apart. And it seems, you know, there's people that want to move into that empty space, that want to do business in our town. And we haven't had any businesses move in there over a long period of time, and that's concerning to the residents and also to, I'm sure, everybody here on this council. I mean, that video den sign is still up there. I mean, when's the last time your children went out and bought a VHS tape?
Yeah, I couldn't imagine a VHS.
Yeah, and this is right next to the only real estate office in town. So people coming into town to purchase or think about buying a home, they walk in, and that town really kind of sticks out as, this has been vacant for decades.
As I said, that, that segues into perhaps a greater vision that we're trying to develop.
Right.
So there's all these incentives for innovation. That's, that's what we're aiming at.
Right, but that's a long way off, I think.
Well, it is, but you have to, you have to have, ideas have to generate.
Yes, they do.
That's, that's the point. We can't have this status quo. And, you know, as far as the particulars of a landlord tenant negotiation, I don't, I don't know what the details were.
Right.
What they were, but as I said-
What the council's role would be in trying to-
Yeah, just in, I know that the properties have been vacant a long time, and is there any way to incentivize the landlord to, you know, to fill these properties with people that are looking to move into Ringwood to do business?
Well, he's got to lower his rents. I mean, he jacked up all the rents.
Yeah, he seems to make it onerous for businesses to come into town.
A young entrepreneur needs two things. Needs reasonable rent, and then needs people to utilize the areas.
Right.
And I've, I've used an example many times here. We have a lot of pizza places, and they're very successful.
They are.
And the reason why is nobody's going to go out through 23 to get a pizza and bring it home. It's going to be cold. They want their pizza hot. So the local pizzas are doing a great job because the residents have a reason to buy the pizza to bring, bring it home hot and not go out to 23 or 46 and spend the money in, in those stores. So you need a commitment from the residents to, to shop local, okay? And we need reasonable rents for, for entrepreneurs to start a business.
Right.
And be able to be successful at it.
Yeah, like I said, he is successful over in Monique. He just wanted to move over here into Ringwood to bring it home, so to speak.
Well, maybe we could draft something similar to this 2018-05 relative to, you know, residential properties being vacant and or abandoned, where, you know, we have things like, are you charging a competitive rent, or if the storefront's been empty for six months?
Or to a year.
Or a year and a half, or whatever it is. We'll draw something up where you need to lower the price or do something in order to try to find somebody. Or is it even actively being marketed to try to?
You know, we're getting into, into private enterprise, into people's financial conditions. Don't forget that they do have units that are rented, okay? Why these are not rented, we don't know. We don't know their financial conditions.
Right.
We don't know their financial pressures, nor do we know the negotiations. Not understanding-
And that's what I was thinking of.
I don't know the details of the negotiation. But, you know, but for, for us to, we, we just, we have no, we have no authority as government to tell people, commercial people, what their, their rents would be. We just don't have that authority.
But we could, we can push it.
What would be?
At a meeting, just to understand their needs, to help incentivize that, you know, to see what we can do.
I'm a capitalist. I mean, what's the incentive? He doesn't want, if, if he's not looking for profit, if he's not, if he has an empty, an empty, you know, couple thousand square feet, and he can rent it to somebody and, and make money from that, and he's choosing not to do that, what do you, what can we incentivize him with?
Well, maybe we can help understand where the issues- It is an eyesore to the community.
Yes, it is.
It, it affects us because it affects the look of Ringwood. It affects when people come pass through on Skyline Drive. So incentive on us to at least try to arm twist them or, or in a friendly way, try to-
Understand. That's why I have a meeting with them.
I would suggest, Mayor, that the committee meet with, get together and meet. We can have the discussions about all the conversations that have happened and update everybody and, and try to put a path forward to get us to where we want to be, whatever that might be. I, I think the committee, working through the, you know, the professionals can, can, can find ordinances that work, that have worked in other communities that we're also work here.
We will have a, we will have a committee meeting.
Great, thank you. And that's it?
Very good.
Okay.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Well, Scott, you have to buy less pencils.
I see that.
We met with the budget committee Sunday night because the storms that we've been having is costing money from the, from not even plowing. It's all the damage, the tree damage, the abuse on the vehicles. And now we have another storm coming tomorrow, and that puts pressure on our budget because we probably had more bad weather in the last few weeks than we did all of last year. So I remember a few, a few weeks ago, many times I talked about the budget. One of the things you try to do is you try to think ahead, normally for hurricane season and for snowstorms. So you try to build in the budget money to take care of that stuff. But when you have- when you have three or four nor'easters that come, and the last one was significant in the fact, the amount of damage from trees, I know just from the Skyline Lakes area, the Skyline Lakes Association, we've had numerous trees that all of a sudden become our problem. And I know the town's got a ton of trees, other things, and God knows, if the weathermen are correct tomorrow, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an expensive day, so. We need a spring real quick.
We do.
The first day today, right?
Let's look at...
Thank you, Mr. Martucci. With that, we'll be going into executive session.
Can I address my question about the Astro turf?
Uh, sure. I think we just did when Mr. Gilbert was here from Pinewood Drive. We applied for Passaic County Open Space Grant to put an artificial turf field at the Stone Town Bowl Field. Part of that proposal would also include lights, we were thinking about a running track, I think we might have taken that out, some improvements there, but it's basically a, an artificial turf field. We have not brought that to the Board of Education yet, at some point we will, when that becomes clearer that that might be a potential that we can, that, that, that we could follow through with. There will probably be...
I understand that it was stated that you had a, had a lease rectified on that. With the Board of Ed, they have, you have to have a lease with them to install this field, correct?
We have a lease on the property now.
Okay. That was my question.
They just, they would have to approve the, the install...
Probably would have to prove, depending on the terms of the lease, they'd probably have to approve any, any of those type of permanent changes that would happen.
No.
No.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we can move into, into executive session. It's like 9:02.